All right, I have 6:32. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank everyone for attending. Can I ask first that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, everyone should have the preliminary agenda in front of them. Do we have any additions or amendments for the agenda?
I have none.
This is Kate, I do. Yeah, if we could add under new business, maybe call it like town landscaping and building maintenance.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next order of business, we have two sets of meetings to approve. The first one is our meeting from June 8th, the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. So you've had a chance to look through it. Any changes or amendments to the minutes as presented?
I have none, they looked good.
Kate?
I agree.
Okay, I didn't see anything either. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th meeting?
This is Kate, yes, I'll make that motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's three in favor. Motion carries unanimously. The June 8th meeting minutes are approved. Next thing is the July 9th Special Board of Selectmen's Meeting. That was called for scheduling a town hearing and a town meeting. Do I have any amendments to the minutes as presented?
I have none.
This is Kate, I have none.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9th minute meeting?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th minutes.
All right, thank you Sean. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. I will now open for public comment. I ask your forbearance with this. I'm not sure how this will go although fortunately or unfortunately, we don't have that larger crowd. Do we have any comments from the public?
This is Melissa Schlag, I just wanted to thank you guys for including a public comment, but I don't have a public comment. Thanks.
Thank you Melissa. Any other comments?
Yes, this is Bob Waller, do you hear me okay?
Yes, Bob.
Okay, I just, I wanted to thank you for putting on the agenda the issue of the Welcome to Hattam signs. We've got two signs that are destroyed now. One happened in February, one happened in late June. And I asked your consideration for the replacement of those signs. I've sent emails to your office, Bob, through Joanne, on both of them. The one on Exit 7 is particularly old right now. That happened in sometime in January, early February. And we've got estimates on that sign to replace it. The other sign that was damaged on June, about June 28th, that was one of the original 2001 signs that was installed by the, I think the Town Beautification Committee at the time. The 2014 sign that went up on Exit 7 was installed by the Economic Development Committee and the Garden Club. We don't have the resources as a garden club to replace those signs, so we asked for your help in terms of getting those replaced as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you Bob. Any other comments?
Yeah, Neil Perrin, can you hear me all right?
Yes Neil.
I brought this up right after you got elected. Now that the bridge is done on Dublin Hill, is it possible to look into possibly dedicating that to Phil Gulf and the entryway to the transfer station to Gunner?
Yeah, I remember you did bring that up. We can take a look at it.
And the only other question I have is, do we know when they'll start cutting back the roads over here? Some of the line of sights are getting pretty bad.
Yeah Neil, if I don't remind me, but I'll bring that up when we talk about the landscaping because it's tied into a couple of other things.
Okay, I know the crews are busy and everything. I mean, they've been doing good on our roads over here, but you know, the line of sight is getting a little bad. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, hearing none, I'll go into my, the Board of Selectmen's update. Projects, Dublin Hill Bridge is finally complete and I will not report on that anymore. The signs are up. I think they're still waiting technically for the grass to grow, but it's done. Scoville Ho Building, it's unchanged from last meeting. We're still waiting for state's permission for our consultant to get access and start to do the environmental and engineering assessments. Tylerville Water, right now is in the 90% to 95% completion range for hookups. There is one that is being particularly problematic, 109, actually it's a hookup for 110 Little Meadow. But to get to that, we need our easement across 109 Little Meadow. And we may have to initiate eminent domain procedures to get access to that. The other part of the Tylerville Water is the paving. We're still waiting for a final proposal from the contractor. They wanted to delay the paving until September after Labor Day after the traffic season. State was not in favor of that. I was not thrilled by it. Contractor was going to put together some alternates, including pricing, and should be getting back to us. In fact, I think should have by now. I've not heard anything though. Last project, roadwork in Hattam Neck Engine Hollow Road, which is the last road to be worked on here, is in the process of being done. It's about 2/3 of the completion. Roadwork will start soon on Christian Hill Road and Lieutenant Shubal Road. It will be followed by work on Dublin Hill sometime later this summer. Town crew has also done some work installing millings on some of our unimproved roads, dirt roads. They did a Goose Springs here in Hattam Neck, and recently did Wake Hill and the dirt road section part of Plains Road on the Hattam side. It's something new we're trying. They're putting down millings from the other roads. It gets packed in. Supposed to be fairly substantial and last fairly well. The other advantage to it is, once you put that down on the dirt roads, they qualify, that section of road qualifies for next year's town aid roads money from the state. As an unimproved road, it doesn't, but once you put the millings down, it becomes improved and it makes it eligible for aid. Other items to talk about, the budget. Hopefully you're all aware, the budget did pass, was passed by the Board of Finance. Mill rate has remained the same. We were able to get tax bills out on time, which I know thrills everybody. You certainly should have gotten yours by now. If you didn't, please contact the Tax Collector's Office to let Kristen know. Town Office Building, the phased opening we've been doing has been going smoothly. Right now, we're open for walk-ins for the Tax Assessor, Tax Collector and Town Clerk from 8:30 to 2:00. A little later this week, we will go to being back open to our full normal hours and that'll be announced on the town website. Quick update on the pandemic. We've had 38 cases now purported in town, still fortunately only one fatality. None of those cases, to my knowledge, are, none of those cases period are in our assisted living facilities. I was somewhat concerned, we had the last two cases popped up about a week ago, week and a half ago, both in the same timeframe, after we'd gone for a full month without any cases at all. Hopefully it's not a sign of the times warning and people getting outside. Once again, I'd ask everybody to follow the Governors and CDC Guidelines for Protection. Wear the mask, social distancing and wash your hands. We don't want to go through what the other states have gone through that may have opened a little too quickly and have to backtrack. As you know, the Governor has delayed the Phase 3 for a couple of weeks just to see how things develop because of what's going on in other states, not because of what's going on in Connecticut. Next item I want to talk about is the Presidential Primary scheduled for August 11th. As of Friday, it looks like we have enough poll workers barely to open all three polling stations. I still would encourage anyone who might be interested in being a poll worker to sign up for that. Again, it's not a volunteer position. You do get paid. You're not going to be able to retire on it, but at least it's something. Absentee ballots have been sent out by the Secretary of State's Office. You should have received them by now. Please consider filling them out and using that instead of going to the polling places, both for the safety of the polling workers and also I am still concerned that we may be under the same pandemic conditions during the November election. I'd rather see a high absentee ballot turnout now so we can test the system when quite frankly, the votes don't matter all that much. It's not going to change who the candidates are. So let's test the system when we can so we have time to make any tweaks to it if need be before the November elections. The other thing that I can think of that we should talk about, Kate, I'm going to turn over to you for the farmer's market that was held last week.
Thank you Bob, yes. This is Kate. So yes, the Farmer, the Higginham, the reinvigorated Higginham Farmers Market kicked off last Friday, July 10th. We were originally hoping to open July 3rd, that was, ended up being a total washout. Friday's decision, we kept our fingers crossed because the weather went back and forth. Ultimately, it did hold out for us and we saw over 225 people walk through the market entrance. There are very comprehensive COVID guidelines that have been issued by the state, specifically for farmers markets, which we are adhering to. That includes masks, social distancing. The Nutmeg Pharmacy was gracious enough to donate hand sanitizer, so we have some stations set up throughout the market. For those who don't know, it's being held outside at Hattam Elementary School, which worked out really well. We did not have troopers yet, and actually, let me backtrack. So the market is being run by a town resident. Her name is Kristy Benson. She runs Bittersweet Farm and she's actually lived in town for less than six months. She moved back here in March and she's from the area, not from Hattam in particular. And she got roped into doing this and she really pulled off an outstanding job. A lot of people, a lot of vendors, if you were there last week, we're going to have many of the same vendors and even more for this week. So the market will be running every Friday through October. We are, normally we would consider moving it inside for rainy conditions, like we saw opening week. However, you know, due to everything that's going on right now, we do, we are, we will have to cancel if there is bad weather. We just, we don't feel comfortable enough moving it within, you know, inside that multipurpose room. We've had people ask and it's just, people don't feel comfortable having that as an option right now. So as the weeks go on, check out our Facebook page. It's updated almost daily. We'll be posting every week which vendors will be there, any other important announcements. So it was a really nice, it was a really nice community event. Really happy to see how many people came out to support it.
Okay, thank you Kate. And yeah, this is Bob, I will add, I was a vendor at that event and the turnout was great. Despite of the weather, I personally was very pleased with how it went overall. All right, Sean, Kate, anything else to add to the update for the meeting?
Actually, yes, this is Kate, if I can add one thing. Before I got sidetracked, I had started to say, so we kept a very close eye on the traffic because we are having people park. You're more than welcome to park at the town green and walk over, but we do have a flow of traffic. So we're requesting that people park in that right-hand parking lot. Some people know it's where the basketball courts used to be. So it's during the busiest, you know, we did have people crossing. So the troopers were going to drive through and just to make sure that they were comfortable with the level of traffic and having people cross. So we just want people to know, you know, safety is definitely on our minds. If it gets to be too busy at some point, we will be requesting, you know, some sort of backup to help facilitate traffic crossing and pedestrians if it comes to that.
Okay, thank you Kate. Sean?
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you Sean. All right, with that, we'll go on to the Board of Education update. Peter, you were going to present that for us?
Good evening. Good to join you. I'm glad to be here. I'm pinch hitting for Brenda Buzzzy tonight. Can everyone hear me?
You're fine Peter.
Excellent, good. So I will read for you the prepared report and endeavor to answer your questions and then with your indulgence afterwards, I'll take my leave. So the summary of June Board of Education meetings and activity. The Board held its annual recognition ceremony via video conference to celebrate the class of 2020's top 10 graduates. Award the district's teachers and staff of the year and give recognition to district retirees for their years of service. The notable awards went this year to valedictorian Arjun Badami of Higginham and also the salutatorian Zachary Holton, also of Higginham. Beth La Puma of RST 17 Central Office was named District Staff Member of the Year and Paige Callahan of HK Middle School was named Teacher of the Year. With gratitude, the Board celebrated the retirements of Eileen Mills, Patricia Zidler, Nancy Chase, Cindy Klein and Gary Shepherd. Regarding the end of the school year, each RST 17 school ended the year in a special way for students from a reverse parade at Killingworth Elementary School to a ringing out ceremony at Burr. HKMS 8th graders had their promotion event with students arriving in their festively decorated cars with teachers and staff cheering as they were driven through to receive their promotion certificate, a gift bag and ice cream. The HK High School class of 2020 celebrated their diploma day with heartfelt drive-through celebration June 15th. Teachers were cheering, there were music, there was music signs for each senior lining the drive. The seniors exited their cars dressed in their caps and gowns and their HK face masks to cross the stage. As their name was announced, Principal Donna Hayward spoke with each student, awarded them their diploma and instructed them to turn their tassel. The entire ceremony was videotaped. Professional photos were taken for each student and the project graduation handed out very generous gift bags to each senior. The in-person commencement for the class of 2020 had originally been scheduled for mid-August and has now been moved to this Friday, July 17th, because many colleges have moved their start dates to August due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Next school year Superintendent Holly Hagaman has pulled together a team of district staff, teachers, administrators and board members for a committee to plan the reopening of schools in the fall. Initial guidelines from the state were released indicating all students will go back to school this fall. Committee is meeting throughout the summer and more details will follow. Curriculum, the Board agreed to purchase $7,500 worth of K through 12 books from the 1920 budget to infuse curricular materials with rich literature from diverse authors with multiple points of view and perspectives, as well as books that teach about empathy, understanding and the richness of diversity. This injection of text into classroom libraries is part of a curriculum plan for Language Arch with the intention to later expand to the social studies curriculum. The RST 17 fund balance, with many uncertainties facing the district next year due to COVID-19, the Board voted to use 1920 fund balance savings as a result of COVID-19 to pre-purchase items that were approved for the 2021 budget. The decision was made with a clear understanding that this $500,000, which was saved only because of the COVID closure, will be used only for COVID-related expenses, such as software needed for distance or hybrid learning or items that can no longer be shared between students. Any unspent funds from this will be returned to our two towns in the 2021 audited fund balance. With regard to capital improvements, the abatement and demolition for the high school gymnasium floor is complete and the construction phase of the project will begin this week with OWI construction. There are separate contractors as well for some replacement lighting and a voice evacuation, voice evacuation system. And for those interested, you can watch the videos of the teacher and student recognition ceremony and the Class of 2020 Diploma Day on the RST 17 website under Community, HKTV. Click here to view Channel 18 Live. And that is my report. I'm open to questions if there are any.
All right, thank you Peter. Kate?
Yes, thank you. This is Kate. Peter, what time is the graduation on Friday and safe to assume it's being held at HKHS?
It'll be at the high school, Kate, that's correct, on the football field. And forgive me for not having the time at hand. I want to say 6:00 PM.
No problem.
I can double check, yeah.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Melissa, thank you. Thank you Peter for the presentation.
All right, thanks for having these reports. Good night everyone.
Thank you Peter.
Thanks Peter, good night. All right, next item on the agenda is tax refunds. We have no request for tax refunds for this meeting to approve. We can move right past that one. We're now into item nine, new business, first one of which is reappointing three, four people, excuse me, to the Wetlands Commission. Their commissions technically expired the beginning of May. And somebody's got a live mic, would you please mute it? Thank you. Anyway, we received a letter from the Inland Wetlands Commission. I'll read it. Upon review of the membership list on file at Town Clerk's Office, it's come to my attention that four commissioners' terms of appointment recently expired on 1 May 2020. Those commissioners are Kurt Chadwick, Dan Uenicki, Tom Worley and myself, Mark Stevens. We would all like to be considered for another three-year appointment. Thank you for your consideration on the matter. Sincerely, Mark Stevens, Chairman, Inland Wetlands Commission. Can I have a motion to reappoint those four member, named members for another three-year term?
I'll make, I didn't realize I was muted. I was actually making the motion with no microphone. I'll make a motion that we reappoint the four listed members of the Wetlands Commission.
Thank you Sean. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next letter we have to talk about is appointments to the Conservation Commission. This letter is from the Chairman, Gail Reynolds. It reads, upon review of the membership list on file at Town Clerk's Office, it has come to my attention that two commissioners' terms of appointments recently expired on 1 May 2020. Those commissioners are Marty Hansen and myself, Gail Reynolds. Both of us would like to be considered for another three-year appointment. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Gail Reynolds, Chairman, Conservation Committee. Commission, excuse me. All right, can I have a motion to reappoint both Marty Hansen and Gail Reynolds of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term?
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to reappoint Marty Hansen and Gail Reynolds for a three-year term for the Conservation Commission.
All right, thank you Kate. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item we have to discuss is what Bob Waller talked about during the public comments. We've had two of the Welcome to Hattam signs destroyed in a vehicle accident. First one was back in the February, March timeframe. Unfortunately, it went an extended period of time before it was reported to the town. The troopers have investigated it. It was a hit and run. I've got nothing to follow up on. It's an unknown vehicle, unknown driver and frankly, exactly at an unknown time. So we have no recourse on any insurance claims for that one. Second one, just to give you all the background and then we can discuss. Second sign was struck much more recently. It was the Welcome to Hattam sign on Route 81 near Hidden Lake Road. Was struck on June 28th, 2020. In that one, the vehicle remained on scene. Fire and ambulance responded, police responded. I have the name of the vehicle operator who has been, was charged at the scene with DUI. However, we have the insurance information. I can pass it on to Kermo once we have estimates. They've replaced that sign and they can pursue action against the individual's insurance company for payment for the damages. Sean?
Yeah, I'm good. Glad Kermo's going to take care of that one. And the old one, just if, you know, I don't, it was around $4,000 to replace that old one, correct? Is that?
That's correct.
Any way that, our deductible is 5,000. Does, you know, any way that we can help the garden club replace that sign, just my question. You know, I know it's not coming out of insurance because the deductible is more than the sign.
Right. Well, my reaction to it is, it is an important marker for the town. I think since they've been put up, we ought to be replacing them and maintaining them as need be. I can see what funds may be available for that replacement.
All right, that'd be, anything we can do is help them out to get it replaced because it is a nice attractive welcoming sign for people coming into our town.
This is Kate, yes, I agree with Sean. I think that's an important part of our town that should be replaced and maintained. Just do want to throw out a suggestion. Not sure if, I don't know the details of what type of company makes this sign, but we do have a new sign shop right in the center of town. So if there's any way that a local business could be the one to recreate that sign, I think that would be a great gesture as well.
It's actually a really good idea Kate, if they can replicate it to almost what it was, that'd be, that'd be interesting if they could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did run into the owner of that shop a few weeks ago. She expressed an interest at the time on bidding on it. We do, Bob, we do have one quote from the original maker of the sign, at least the old one. We can certainly ask her for a price to see how they compare.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and let's see, Bob, are you still on, Bob Waller?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I have the broken sign from Exit 7 in my garage. So if you need to replicate that, you can use that as a template to ease the issue of getting an estimate on it. As far as the Route 81 sign, that was one of the assigned As far as the Route eighty-one sign, that was one of the signs that was put up in two thousand and one, and painted by, I think Mr. DeCarly, Sue DeCarly's uncle or grandfather had done that, and I have pictures of it, but I, but I couldn't, there was nothing left to recover from that scene, so we'd have to do it from a sketch or from a photograph.
Okay.
Perhaps if, if Bob could email Joanne the, the photograph, get that to Kerma so they, you know, get an idea of what we're, we're asking for replacement of.
Who was the person? You said Kerman?
Kerma, the insurance, but I'll send it to, send the picture to Joanne.
Okay, yeah, well, actually, I did send a picture, but it's, it's not the best picture, so I just, it was just illustrative of what it looked like, I think I might have a clearer one I could send, so I'll do that.
All right, thank you, Bob, any other discussion on the Welcome to Haddam sign replacements?
This is Kate, maybe not, not specific to the signs themselves, but just a general, general reminder to people, if you see something, say something, I know it sounds corny, I hate to be that commercial, but it's true, and I, I see it in my job all the time, people just assume, you know, you see something, and then you just assume, oh, somebody else is going to say something, oh, somebody else has already reported it, you really might be the first person, so it's a shame that it went unreported for so long, and now, you know, and now nothing can be done about it, so I know, you know, living in a small town, it can seem like everybody's always reporting on everything, but just make sure the information gets to the right set of people who can take an action and do something about it.
Yeah, this is Bob, that's an excellent point for us all to remember. All right, next item on our agenda is the Water Pollution Control Authority. This is just sort of a heads-up for the people who are listening and anyone who revisits this meeting. We have a hearing scheduled for the twenty-seventh of July to discuss this and expose, and let the town in general know about it. But basically, because we are looking to establish a community septic system on the HES property, we need to establish a water pollution control authority to oversee that. A proposal for inordinance has been put forward by Bill Warner, the town planner, it's been reviewed by our town lawyer who finds, he thinks it's sufficient. The gist of it is, the Board of Selectmen will be appointed as primary members to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and two alternates will be appointed from the other electors of the town at large. Kate, Sean, you should have received a copy of that, any questions on what you did, what you got?
Honestly, I didn't see, I didn't see, I didn't see it in my email, I'll take another look, so I'll, I will find it, and I'll read it, and I'll get back to you if I have questions.
Okay, if you can't find it, Sean, let me know, or let Joanne know, we'll email you a copy.
Thank you.
I don't think I got a copy of it either.
Okay.
Which is why you probably didn't get it either, Sean.
Okay, this is Sean, yeah, just send along, and we'll take, we'll review it, and I'll, I'll just email if I have any questions.
Okay. I think I got that scheduled for a public hearing on the twenty-seventh. All right, next item under new business is the town landscaping, Kate?
Yes, um, so I've been approached, and I've seen some comments, and so I don't, I don't have a solution for this yet because it's all kind of fresh, but I just wanted to bring up, so this came up at last week's EDC meeting, and I've also seen some things on Facebook, and I've had people make comments, just some concerns about, like aesthetic appearance of town-owned properties, and I know some of it is being worked on currently, like one of the examples was HES, which I understand is now under a new landscaping contract, which is being addressed immediately. One of the other properties that comes up a lot is Haddam Meadows, which I try to remind people that is, Haddam Meadows might be located in Haddam, but it's, it's owned and operated by the state, so we really have no control. So the concerns I've heard about are just general, like overgrown weeds, maybe invasive plants, and also garbage, just general trash and litter seems to be an issue as well, and also, I've heard the, the gazebo, the pillars, look like they, they either need to be power-washed or painted, just some general comments about town upkeep, town building upkeep, I know we have a great Public Works crew that's really, they just, I see them all over the place, so again, I hate to bring up an issue and not have a proposed solution yet, it does sound like a lot of what is being commented on could actually be handled by volunteers, you know, obviously, subject to permission of Board of Selectmen or whoever at the town level, you know, like painting is something that could be a volunteer project, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the boards, see if there's any other suggestions or anything that we could be doing volunteer-wise.
No, that's, it's a good point, the volunteer point, Kate, this is Sean, you know, students need volunteer hours, and that's actually some decent projects for kids in high school, you know, to, to look at the weeds or that painting, so maybe something we put on our radar to put out there to, to the school for, as opportunities for, for students and community service hours.
This is Bob, I think that's a good idea, if there's any community organizations that would like to participate in a community service project, that's certainly welcome, I think the painting at the gazebo is a great idea, a great project for something like that. You know, right now, I'm trying to be somewhat fiscally conservative because we don't know what the tax revenues are going to look like, you know, come about mid-August, we should be, have a handle on how much of a hit, if any, have we taken because of the pandemic, but I'm trying to keep things a little on the tight side until we have, have a better idea. Neil, to the point you raised about the roadside mowing, the town has two tractors that can be used for roadside mowing, one has been on the Haddam side, unfortunately, one has been in for repairs for a couple of weeks now, and it may be, you know, a week or so before it's backing out, that's primarily what the reason is for that delay on the roadside work, but it will get done, your point is valid about the sightlines and the growth on the sides of the road. And finally, I'd also like to point out, Public Works, the only actual lawnmower Public Works has is a small push lawnmower, which is why we contract all that out, but I will take a look at the contract and see what exactly is covered and make sure things have been attended to, because I have gotten a few complaints directed in my office as well.
This is Kate, Bob, so if somebody, so if a group or whether it's a committee or a group of people, if they do want to volunteer to take on a project such as painting, what's, what's the process to getting that done and make sure it's, you know, being done the right way with approval and all that fun stuff?
Yeah, this is Bob, just have any group that's interested contact my office, and we'll make the arrangements.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, anything else on that topic? Okay, I believe we've reached the end of our agenda.
Your turn, Kate.
No, I wasn't the one keeping track this time, this is Kate, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, once again, unanimous consent on here, thank you, everyone, I have to thank everyone in the audience who attended, stay safe, and.
See you at the market on Friday.
See you Friday, feel free to give my office a call or send us an email if you have anything that needs to be discussed, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Be safe.
This conference is no longer being recorded.